The regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wisconsin stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as well.
Aye.
Okay, so for those of you that don't remember me, I'm Natalie Rush. I'm one of the Ag teachers.
All my money is dragon, I'm a little bit scared.
So we have about 28 students that have earned a trip to go attend a state convention for FFA. This is going to be April 21st to the 23rd in cities at the University of Minnesota on the St. Paul campus. We have a couple teams that are still actually in the process of qualifying in the next two weeks in April, decide if they're going to actually make it to the state convention contest or not. So if every one of those students earns a trip, which would be great, we would have 35 students coming with us. So we're asking permission to take these students on an overnight trip. We would leave Sunday morning at about 7:00 a.m. on the 21st and get back at about 7:00 p.m. on the 23rd, that Tuesday, which should be right in time for them to take their MCOs on Wednesday. So we don't even do any retakes on those, which is pretty good. For sure. We are requesting that the school board assist in paying for our special teacher costs for both of us, the hotel rooms for our state qualifying teams, and transportation costs for the competing teams, which would be a charter bus for that many students to be gone for three days. Any questions? Do we know what state convention is, FFA? I think most of us do. So we have our junior parlay team qualifying, our parlay elementary procedure team that qualified. Livestock evaluation and meats evaluation is non-internal for FFA, so we don't know for sure if they're going to make it. But we have high chance, we think they're going to qualify. A lot of teams get a chance to go. The container animal team, which is small animals, poultry team is also qualified, horse, prepared public speaking. Our dairy evaluation team is also tentative, depending upon, again, on the 12th when they're going to be qualifying. Our flora culture team is also tentative on the 10th when they're going to have their qualifying contest. And then we have six students that are in their state FFA degree this year. So they also get to watch for us at the state convention as well.
I guess the one discussion I have on it is, and I know it's hard to prove, but if you've had this issue with this charter bus, it's a huge cost, but I don't think that far we're not giving it. We've tried to clamp down on how to do sports, even if this is a distance and lugging and all that stuff. We've had that issue. I just give it to one and then now you start hearing about it.
Yeah, and I would have, it's great we got all those.
Yes.
I mean, that's awesome.
No, you're just over that.
And then we have to send our whole fleet.
Exactly. That's not even nice for them guys, pine drivers and all that stuff too. So I'm kind of forward. I'm just got some questions. I mean, because we've had that issue. It's great to see the number of students.
Second. I have a motion in the second near the discussion. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes.
So thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Good luck to the kids.
All right. Next. 5.2, Dr. Zach Troyer, marching band request.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So the marching band is going to the Portland Rose Festival parade, June 5th through the 11th. This is a trip that's organized by the Band Carrying Association. There's no cost or anything specific. We just need to get permission to take school property along on this trip. Which would be like the instruments and the school uniforms and things like that. So that's what we're asking for, permission to take school property along on this trip.
That's good news. Can I get a motion to approve that request? I have motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Have a good trip.
And have fun.
And good luck.
Number six, consent agenda. Anybody having questions on the consent agenda? Does anybody have a chance to go forward with consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, financials. 7.1, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie.
Our budget year-to-date looks fine. Currently at 62 percent. Last year at this time, we're at 63 percent. Any questions?
Any questions from Jackie? 7.2, approved treasurer's report for February 2024.
Gas balance is currently $8.3 million. Basically, you just go by hand and you check what's up. You want to look down in the bottom, bottom part where you're setting your budget, you can trace on the CDs with your thanks.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Someone.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. 7.2, or 7.3.
This is the additional bond money. Certainly have a balance at the end of February at $2.7 million.
Any question on the bonds? Get a motion to approve the 2023 A bonds treasurer's report for February 2024.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. 7.4, approved regular bills for March. Did everybody have a chance to look? Did anybody see anything look out of place or there were questions on? Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for March? I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. 7.5, approved high school activity bills for March. Same as this one. Anybody have any questions on the district reports? Can I get a motion to approve high school activity bills for March?
Someone.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board form information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Have any meeting meetings?
We had a calendar meeting. And you'll see later in the agenda that, um, the first reading of the calendars. Nothing really big, maybe the only changes. I think where we put it in the calendar is moving graduations.
We're looking at some options there.
Looking to move graduation to the weekend after Memorial Day. And I've done some, like, reaching out to some parents and some are for it, some are not for it, and some don't really have an open, because it doesn't bother them.
What's the reason?
Just trying to get away from the holidays. A lot of them are like, can we move it to the weekend before Memorial Day? Which would be ideal, but, I mean, a lot of them are like, well, you know, after, after Memorial Day, they're just ready for summer to start. They start doing cattle shows, vacations and...
That was before you wouldn't get...
This next year, we would have the, because Labor Day's so early, but if you ended up with a late Labor Day start, you would really compress. Yeah, as soon as you get the holidays, the Memorial Days, yeah. But, but we, we said we wanted to cast this line out, and that's why there's draft readings tonight, not final readings, because we want to get some feedback from people. And we had staff members that were there, and I think there was some interest in having this conversation.
I graduated after Memorial Day weekend. I do know that.
I, I personally, to Memorial Day, I just, I just, I just, I mean, it's summer, it's showtime. You're going to have a weekend there.
Well, like, Memorial Day weekend, parents, I mean, people are probably like, over the weekend. I mean, I'm not a door, but, I mean, right, everyone.
But school is out before Memorial Day.
No. School is out past Memorial.
All, okay. Seniors.
Seniors is different.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking of the whole district. Okay, now you're going on a week of nothing going on, and then there's... So they go later.
Right. So I think what they were, were typically looking at would, like, graduations for Memorial would be Friday night. And then, like, we would have all teachers involved in that.
We do, like, you adjusted school day, so the day wouldn't start at 8:00 in the morning for the teacher to shift, so that that's part of the workday, so all the teachers are there, blocking the doors. Again, we're just...
Just a thought.
Just balling some ideas and...
Yep, just a thought. Yep.
I have a different period now.
We're open to feedback, but we just did it. We want to get public to input.
Those are the courts, the margins, and some don't have a way to do it. Yeah. I mean, I was just, I was pretty not feelers, because I was like, I, I mean, I really don't... We don't do any Memorial Day guests, because they're usually, hopefully not, hopefully not fancy by that. Like, what do they do for those two and a half days?
The teachers are all smiling in the back, so I think you know the answer to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's a, it's a valid question. What are the names of those?
I'm like, here, I'm thinking of the faculty and the clear things, so all of their leaders, you know, and then you have, you know, yeah, there's some celebrations for, um, a lot of, I believe, there's a lot of, um, they would make the graph up and, like, just sort of, like, here, here, out, um...
I think that's a great discussion to have. There have been some possible changes that MSBA has made to cellphone policy. And I think a lot of it is reflecting the circumstances in Minnesota. And some schools that removed cellphones from their schools, said they decreased scrolling, included backend attention to the work that's going on in the classroom. There's a number of things to take reference that is maybe making a difference on. So it comes down to all of the social change and policy. We, I think we get the policy now, start communicating it, but this is the way things are going to be. Well, you do see board members, the attached enrollment report, and I'm not going to dwell on that too much. There's not much variation from where we've been. Rather focus a little bit of time and energy just highlighting a few things in the written report that you see attached. I know that there've been some questions that have come forward about different partnerships in the district, and one of those is the collaborative that we're part of. And I provided the board an updated list of all the different communities across the state of Minnesota that are part of that. We do not have a current memorandum of agreement or understanding, so there's been some communication between the Southwest Minnesota Health and Human Services as well as my office to start looking at a formalized agreement that would lay out requirements from the different parties that are part of that. So you can anticipate at a future board meeting that that agreement will be brought forward and probably either April or the May board meeting for consideration. That would define some of those expectations and a mutual understanding of those things. Roofing, we've already talked about, and health insurance is one of those things that we're still waiting for updates on. And there's been a lot of concern in the region about some health insurance costs. So one of the things that has been discussed by a number of districts in the area is starting to incorporate some sort of wellness plans into school districts. And that's something I think is worth exploring, maybe starting a wellness committee with staff, just talking about some different things that can be done internally to encourage and support healthy choices and some wellness incentives, those types of things. So that's something I'd like to explore and examine a little bit with staff. Then obviously, we know that there are a number of vacancies that we're advertising for, and as we said, policy subcommittee as well. And again, I just want to personally say thank you to the board members for the grace that was shown. As my dad passed, it was a difficult time, but again, thanks to the board members that reached out individually and collectively. I really do appreciate it. It was very heartfelt, so thank you. That's really all I had. If there's any questions.
All right, so we, Mrs. Doulis and I held ninth grade student registration on March 18th, and we had a great turnout. I met a lot of parents, and the students were excited to be able to choose their classes for next year. She did a great job with her presentation. Our preliminary seniors last day with your approval is going to be Tuesday, May 21st. All other high schoolers will, the numbers of, the number of hours that they are going to be receiving, let me back up. The minimum instructional hours for high schoolers is broken down by hours is 1,020 hours per year. We're well within that, so if we let students go on Tuesday, they are receiving 1,336 hours of instruction. And the other students that would still be in the building for the remainder of the week would be receiving 1,384 hours. So kudos to us for really raising the bar for the number of hours that our students attend, which is great for us. So when I'm done with that, I think we can go ahead and approve that unless you have questions about that. Okay, perfect, okay. I did attend a workday for curriculum directors a couple of weeks ago. We talked about ELA curriculum options and began working together on our local literacy plan. A portion of our curriculum is supposed to be reimbursed by the state of Minnesota if we choose state-approved materials. We are waiting until that final list is shared out. Right now, the list is fairly short, and they're planning on adding more in June before we start making decisions. Mrs. Morvitz and I are very excited to start making decisions about curriculum, but we just have to pump the brakes a little bit on that until they get the final list going. So we're not choosing for this fall. We're waiting until next year just so that we can make a decision with more fidelity. Mrs. Doulis, our high school counselor and I are meeting with students right now who are in danger of not graduating. We don't want that to be a surprise to anyone. Two weeks ago, our middle and high school staff sent out hundreds of postcards to students. I had, I think, how many, hundreds? I had hundreds sitting there, maybe 300, and all but three were taken during our communication day. So our staff, maybe your children got something in the mail, we have students here. I've been busy getting to know the students and the families and visiting classrooms and providing feedback to teachers. We are piloting a program on a very small scale right now called Reading Plus for title and for some of our students, grade three through 12, to help close the achievement gap in literacy with those groups. We may use it for a larger population next year. It's just a really cool personalized program that focuses on fluency, how fast your eyes can scan the text as you read, comprehension, how well you understand what you're reading, and also vocabulary acquisition. I've had great luck with it in a previous district, and so far, we were able to really identify, one of the things that it does, it identifies all of those areas and it gives you a Lexile, a grade level score, and then every day you can see exactly how many minutes a student is spending on it. And the program will tell the administrator or the teacher exactly what topic the students are reading about. Some students just want to read about dinosaurs, and they get to choose. They get to choose the topic that they read about, and they do like that choice. So I have about 24 students working on that program right now. I am asking to switch to a seven-period schedule for next, starting next year. So we were a regular seven-period school prior to COVID, and then with COVID, things had to change in terms of when are students going to be in the building, how can we make, you know, less of a population around this state. So this sort of block hybrid, block slash skinny system was integrated. And what I'm finding, and the majority of the staff agrees with me, a survey was sent out, 95% of the staff agreed, that that was a good move, and that's something that we should explore and go back to. One of the things it's really going to help with is that we're all on the same bell schedule. Right now, we're not. So when someone's absent, so for example, tomorrow, I had six staff members already absent at the middle and high school, and I'm probably, so that's already what I know. If we were all on the same bell schedule, it would be a lot easier for me to find staff to help assist with that. Because right now, what we're finding is we ask during second hour, can you help for 10 minutes? But then I have a class because our middle school and high school is on different bell schedules. So I, I'm still working with Mrs. Doulis on that, trying to iron out the kinks, but if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to answer, and possibly some of the staff that's been helping with that behind me would be happy to answer some questions about that, too. It's fourth quarter, and senior privileges start this week. I had, I always love when students come to me or send me an email. High school kids love to send emails in the most professional way, I'm finding. And so, they do, they really do. And they email me and ask for an appointment, and so I feel like, well, this is a very big deal. What's happening? So they come to me and they ask respectfully about things. In this particular group of students came to ask about senior privileges and the possibility and laid out all of the options for me, and there was nothing I could do except say, absolutely, I'll get the kinks worked out, I'll talk to our U of M students, and we'll start it fourth quarter. So parents have been notified, I have permission slips and waivers that have already come back. Students must be in good standing as seniors. They have to have all passing grades, be up to date on their detentions, and not have any tardy infractions or anything else to stay in good standing. And then, so we'll check that list every week. And we won't do it on Wednesday because their extended lunch hour would be cut short due to our short day.
So what are they asking for?
They asked for, they asked for, can we do it at least 50 days a week for lunch? Go to their prime, check in. And we have a system now that we, we're going to make it so that not all of those kids are in the office at once checking out. We're going to do it in their prime, then they'll go to lunch, they'll come back into the office. It sounds like it would be a seamless process for me. We'll see. It's open lunch, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, like an open campus for seniors that have, are in good standing. So it'll be a good push for those kids that are failing some classes and have missing assignments and aren't quite getting in gear. It'll be, it'll be an incentive. They were excited. And so I said, how about, we'll do four days a week? So they were, they were excited about that, but they do want to have, you know, privilege to be a senior. It's a very special thing. Aside from that... Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I know, exactly.
Life skill, life skill.
It is a good life skill.
Yes, absolutely. Otherwise, that is all that I have for you. If you have questions, please share out. Absolutely. My pleasure. It's been really awesome. It's okay. It's delightful. Thank you for having me. Correct. Unless they're using the app. Yep, that's right. At least you know that you see someone. You probably shouldn't. Right. Where today. No, I... People coming and going. Right, right. They really are. We're very excited about getting that part in. It's going to be called something different. It's going to be, what we have imagined is a directed studies where the teacher that, it's going to take some paperwork and some scheduling, but my, I would envision, if I were struggling in math, I shouldn't be in an English teacher's directed studies. If that's, if that's the problem that I have, I should be paired with that teacher during their study hall. So I'm looking at, trying to make that happen. Just so it's more meaningful and it's not just a free-for-all, you know, just play games on the computer. I want it to, you know, got some work, especially for students that have missing work. It would be...
Don't answer that because you might age yourself.
I remember changing the card at work, like we have.
Well, I remember with Maggie.
Yeah, I think that, that will, for the seniors.
We'll look into that for sure, just to create some sort of transition plan.
That's what they do.
All right, it feels like the last board meeting was forever ago, but, so we had Jump Off the Heart at the elementary. Our, the school, this is amazing. We raised over $7,000 in a week. That was more than rookies did. And I'm just like, this is impressive. Our goal was 3,000, and they met, it was over 7,000. That's incredible for one week. We had our Trippett Kids program on March 1st. I love that and have the community, and we have more community members coming in and bringing things. It's so incredible. I love that. Celebrating kids. Kindergarten roundup was March 22nd and 23rd, and I'm so excited. My kindergarten team was like, it was like very seamless. Last year, we redid the screening protocol based on the ESIPs, the Early Learning Guidelines, and it was just a seamless process, and it was very kind of cut and dry on our junior kindergarten, kindergarten students. We just wrapped up the end of third quarter on March 28th. We had our On Target Arrow Parade where two students are selected from every classroom, and they get free to do the hallways, celebrating those students. Last Friday, so this past school year, I told you, we really focused on our writing standards, and I brought in students and they did published books. So on Friday, I sent off the published books. I'm so excited. Students in grades preschool, junior kindergarten, kindergarten and first grade, they did a class book. And then students in second grade through fifth grade did their individual books. So this Friday, they get published, and then they get sent to us the end of this month. And so I'm looking at a date in May of having a young authors' night, where families can come in and check out the books that our students wrote. Very exciting. Just kind of tapping onto her for our literacy update, she went to the thing, and we have a few samples that our teachers are looking at right now. Hopefully get some more once the final list comes out. And we had talked that we do want to tap the brakes. I don't want to jump too quickly on a literacy curriculum because it is so huge and so important, but spending another extra year piloting and really looking at some of these programs and really making an informed decision with that.
All right, moving on. Number 10, discussion items. 10.1, food and environmental services against the TSP cooperative. First, we need a motion to remove it from the table. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify the same time.
Aye.
All the same side, motion passed. And then we can entertain the motion.
I think the question before was, what that about was?
Yeah, and great question. And my computer's giving me glitches, so I'm going to have to restart here. So I'll just go off of what I recall from looking at it. The original scope changed as the feedback came on the track with the subsurface after the soil borers were done. They, the design expansion included the design to reconstruct the entire track. And so that's what was reflected in that document was that redesign of the track, taking out that subsurface and everything. You'll notice that this document is different though than the one that you looked at before because it reflects a deduct from going through all the bid processes and everything, because I've let them know that more than likely we weren't going forward with that, given a facility subcommittee discussion about the roofing projects and those types of things. So they've completed all their design work. We have those designs in our hands, so they are in the ownership of the school district and not TSP's property. So it's, it's ready to basically plug and play for whether it's TSP or some other architect down the road to do that scope of work that was part of the additional cost that was in this, in this plan. And that came in December when we talked, when TSP had been through here, and they had shared the findings that they had with those soil borers, that yeah, we should probably have considered the redesign of the track and get some cost estimates for that and those types of things. So that's what that reflected was those dollar differences for that addition. Is that... Yes, I do, so. Correct, correct. We have everything that they went into the design, which includes everything in the interior of the building as well. Pride of the garden. Potentially, but for the, for the, for the most part, I think, I think this is, because the, these are pretty, they're not real intricate type projects with a lot of electrical and technology work that needs to be done. And dealing with the bulk of the big dirt work, for example, that's pretty straightforward. So anyhow, that's, I hope I answered your question. There you go. You bet.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, signify the same time.
Aye.
All the same side, motion passed. Number 11, board action. 11.1, resolution, accepting donations to high school activities. We have a list of quite a few donations. All were, all were through robotics, Ford Funds West for $100, Open and Paradise LLC for $50, Sandro and Associates for $100, Eagle Trucking for $1500, Auto Parts Auto Value Car Stores for $50, and Scott's Auto for $50. I'd like to thank all the organizations for their generous donations. One thing we want to board to note is our RO, our RO Alex team very well supported us. Can I get a motion to approve these donations to the high school activities?
Sure.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify the same time.
Aye.
All the same side, motion passed. 11.2, approved technology surplus items.
It's one of these big overhead projected things that, yep, has certainly lived past its timeline here in the district, so.
Questions on the surplus item?
Five stone, five stone county museum.
Can I get a motion to approve the technology surplus item? Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify the same time.
Aye.
All the same side, motion passed. 11.3, first reading of the 2024, 2025, and the 2025 and 2026 school calendars.
Guess that's the only other update I'd make is we're working to get in the cadence of having two calendars out for planning purposes, knowing that we'll adopt the two calendars, and then next year, we'll revisit this calendar and make certain, there's nothing that we learned from this calendar, but we modify to change and then add to new. And so we get this cadence of rolling forward two calendars every time, and just helps with planning purposes. And families tend to appreciate that as much as staff, so. The other things, yeah, I thought it was...
Yeah, I went really good.
Staff was really involved, having input.
Yeah, very engaged. And we also talked about Wednesdays instead of being inconsistent. We just thought, let's, let's try a consistent early release, all Wednesdays instead of, is this a Wednesday that's not, or is it? Just making it a universal approach and then doing a better job with implementing our professional learning communities with our staff during those Wednesday times. And still maintaining a communication day as well as part of that process, because I think that's very important. So just building in some consistencies throughout the district as we approach those Wednesdays.
No. It's full day. What they, what they did before is if, if you had like, see, we had Monday, Tuesday off, then when you only have a half a week, you went a full day. So is what they did. And I, I was just looking at the calendars here. The 25, 26 has graduation not on Memorial Weekend, but 24, 25 has it on. So, I mean, that's just something that we gotta...
Yep, and that's where we need to...
Decide.
Try to figure that out. Yep, so that's why this is the first draft, and knowing that we want the feedback, and we'll see what feedback we get and come back with that modification.
This is just the first reading, so we'll take action.
So you get like, yeah, so there's still always five E-learning, but there is snow days, and there are certain days that we did not use a snow day for, like President's Day, February, and what was that, February? Because it's a holiday. So we did not use that one. And then the Good Friday, we did not use it, and the Easter weekend. But pretty much everything else, besides like, we break it. Right?
Options to be stolen, yep.
And you're dang if you do, dang if you don't want those.
It'd been nice to have in the toolbox.
Right, that they're nice to have. I agree. I agree.
Very good. Questions or discussion?
If you do receive feedback, board members, just drop any note, letting me know one way or the other what your feedback is relative to that graduation time, and we'll make those adjustments before then the final rating.
Moving on, 11.4, approval, approved recommendation for seniors last day at school, which was again, senior.
I make a motion to approve seniors last day as May, Tuesday, May 21st?
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify the same time.
Aye.
11.5, approved 2024, 2025 contracts with SWWCC Service Cooperative.
What you see here, board members, are the services that we've had with the Service Cooperative. And as with many things, the costs have gone up, and as you look at these different items, again, it just keeps us compliant with the things that we have. With special education services in particular, you can see that that's where the bulk of the services come from. We had an agreement previously for a social worker. We do not have that agreement as currently we are trying to find and identify a social worker on our own, believing that we could do it in a more cost-effective way by employing them ourselves rather than having that as a contracted service in the Service Cooperative. I'm going to put an asterisk behind that though and say if we don't find somebody that, that can fill that role, we may have to come back to the Service Cooperative and see if we can work out some arrangement for that social work service because it is a very valuable position at the elementary level. And if you have questions about that, I'm sure Miss Morvitz would be happy to answer those because it is an important service. But again, you can see that the services... But again, you can see that the services really haven't changed much, but the prices have. And it's just part of the cost of doing business when you talk about special education services. It's what we have to do. So that's why it's recommended to pass. Yeah, we only have that one service in there, yeah. When you cross, go across lines, for example, like the speech language, 268,000, 293,000, and it's a big increase, but again, it's... Very limited. Not that I'm aware of, but certainly we can ask if there are other employment services that provide similar... Yes, yep, yep. I'm not aware of anything, but... And again, that's why when our team met to talk about like the services for the social worker, we said, "Well, comparatively speaking, I think we could do a little bit better than that."
One thing that I've thought of in the past would be like this speech therapist. If that, if that speech therapist, if that's a work experience, and if there would be possible. First, if they will be qualified. And then two, if we can do it.
Doesn't protest the board?
It's worth the information. The clock needs to be checked.
Which there's...
And the clock needs to be turned up, so I'm just saying that there's a major problem.
Right, yep.
So I'm...
But I...
My...
Yep, I know there's one... It's worth, it's worth a phone call. Phone calls are cheap.
I'm just saying, I just don't let the clock be needed. And the clock has, that's the main reason our team's got the clock to turn up because they could give them higher... They had to draw a contract. Whenever you draw a contract, it's going to cost you more.
Well, it's the same with us. I mean, everything on that, it works for a contract. Which adds up.
Get a motion to approve. I have a motion on second. All those in favor signify at the same time.
Aye.
All same side. Motion passed. 11.6, approved administration budget recommendations.
Well, board members, we provided you some narrative and some perspective on some different things that we discussed. We talked about what's going on within our programs, both at the elementary level and in the middle school, high school level. And we looked at student counts, the level of service of what's being provided at those different areas. We also looked at what was previously covered and funded through our ESER funding or the funding that came from the federal COVID money. Probably the easiest way to describe ESER. And the idea is that we would retain all of those positions that were previously funded with ESER. And I think that was the intent all along of the district to retain those positions. So those positions include the social worker at the high school level, the junior kindergarten teacher, a music teacher, a science teacher, and an English teacher, as well as a multilingual outreach coordinator. And you can see what the cost of retaining all those are, including some savings off... Well, including some savings that can be realized from the social worker position. Later on, I referenced this. We get about $40,000 from the state to retain the social work position, but the total cost of those positions is $380,000 roughly. There's some general fund savings that are anticipated to come as a direct result of some resignations that we have. And those resignations will be hired back with what we anticipate to be a less expensive teacher. And we utilize what our historical data has told us. Fiscal year '24, so this current year, the average higher salary benefits was $73,000, roughly $73,500. And so we saw a range of savings, potentially as high as $36,000, as low as roughly $4,000 loss compared to where somebody's at. So essentially a break even point there. But... And then the other part that our budget plan brought forward to consider was what do we do with some capital projects? And you can see that that's referenced. Essentially, all our LTFN money is accounted for already by some prelim... or previously approved projects for a final phase of lighting in the auditorium and then some work that's used to pay for the capital facilities bond as well as the health and safety estimate. So that's the overall arching premise of the document. The one thing that we as a team would like to offer as an additional staffing to the district is hiring either a counselor or a dean of students at the elementary level to support Mrs. Morvitz in what she's doing. And we figured the average cost of that position, again, $73,448. And that's just to balance some of the workload that's going on between the high school, middle school area, and the elementary. And we have seen an escalation in some behaviors. There's a lot of work that Ms. Morvitz does that does take her away from her ability to get into classrooms and observe teachers and mentor and coach teachers along the way. So that's why you see this as a recommendation in the total package of the budget tonight and what's in front of you. So that's what we're bringing forward as we combine all this together and understand that we tried to find ways to save some resources as we go forward. Like I mentioned, that cost of the social worker potentially, but also know that we would like to add one person, one position, and advertise it either as a dean of students or as a counselor and see what options come forward out of the candidate pool. Anything I missed, ladies? I'm gonna condense your timeline even more. I'm gonna say my last thing.
Back to your question. All right, I would echo what Jennifer shared that there's been an increasing shift of responsibility over to the public school. And people often don't pause to think that what's happening out there automatically stops when we walk across the threshold of the school. What happens in the school oftentimes reflects what's going on out there. And that's why we have the late breakfast options. That's why we have a lot of things that we did five years ago. As a direct result of that. And it's a big shift, it really is. And I look at some of the services that we just approved with the Service Cooperative. And that list looks vastly different going from five, seven years ago with the behavior specialists and behavior analysts and all those things. I think so much of it is just a manifestation of some of those factors that are happening in the home or maybe not happening.
And Jennifer is correct. She had asked for both and I let her know that I didn't think we could in a sustainable way maintain both positions. And that's why you see the recommendation of the one position, either the dean of students or counselor advertised. We'll see which one draws the greatest number of potential applicants. And then obviously, we have to continue to evaluate the budget going forward because we know as you open up the newspaper headlines across the state, we get those from MSBA and you see school districts all over the state making budget cuts and reductions, which is really startling for a lot of people because of the level of funding that came to the school. But so much of that funding that came to the schools from the last legislative session has so many details attached to it and mandates or requirements. So again, it's not without caution that we make this recommendation. It's understanding that we have some dynamic needs in our system that hopefully this position will help solve and support. But again, it doesn't mean that we're taking an eye off the ball in terms of managing a raw budget of the district.
Oh, you gotta put a priority on it. I would've went the other way. I would've thought it would be the students. That's why I was curious, especially in the city. I'm in favor of one. So I think we have... The dean, yeah.
So the idea is that, and in the narrative, we talk about the dean of students, the social worker, and the counselor. And what I have suggested to Jennifer is that we focus on one, either the dean of students or counselor, maintain the social worker, which was a contracted service previously from the Service Cooperative. And then the other position I did not mention that was suggested through our process, and this is because of the increase that we're seeing in our multilingual students, is that we would add a multilingual teacher, multilingual English learner teacher to the craft because we have two teachers that are servicing roughly 157 kids in a paraprofessional that's supporting this. So they're like over one. I mean, that's just, we're not doing justice to the multilingual kids that we have. So back to the elementary, with the recommendation of one position, place the social worker that was a previously contracted service in the Service Cooperative with our own, so that's kind of a wash. But just the new additional position would be dean of students or counselor, with the preference being counselor.
Whatever your recommendation was.
Yep, that's the two. Those would be the two. Yep.
11.7, approved recommendation to bid roof projects attract overrated pile proceeds.
So I'll just introduce by saying that this was what we talked about in the facilities subcommittee and, and, um, part of that included looking at some, um, proposed potential costs by a couple of different, um, roofing providers out there. And we had actually, uh, Tremco that came in, talked about some of their project, uh, that, the projects that they've done before. And they've worked on a number of schools in the southwestern part of the state, a number of schools across the entire state, actually. And, um, they did provide kind of a timeline of potential, um, project completion that you can see there as well. That's, that's part of this because, um, when we visited with Tremco, we were very clear about the timeline for the funds to be expended, which is September of '26. So, um, we were very explicit about that as a requirement. And, um, there was a, there was a pretty good feeling from the subcommittee when we met with Tremco that, um, they, they do a good job, they stand behind their product. They actually done some work on our school for us, um, above and beyond, just because they recognize the needs that they in good conscience didn't feel like walking away from after the limited inspection. So that was, uh, that was kind of nice as well. So, uh, what, what this recommendation would be, um, doing is authorizing the administration to approach Tremco, develop the working agreement with Tremco, and then bringing that forward to the board that would allow us to move forward with the roof project. But right now, the last action that the board had taken with these funds was to do these other projects. And this essentially would be the board taking the privilege of the projects, authorizing us to move into a more formal discussion with Tremco and bringing forward a recommendation on, and we look at the board to act upon. I would anticipate it early as our April meeting and, um, getting that in the process. So that this summer they could initiate the diagnostics of the roof and start to bid projects. And they said the good news about a project like this, uh, we should have a pretty competitive bidding climate because of the size and scope of the project, number one. But number two, because of the very favorable winter that we had, there's roofers that were able to work all winter long and they're hungry for work. So a lot of tea leaves in our favor right now. That's, that's a great question.
I remember, I remember them saying that I hadn't even heard of the original bond that.
Original bond. You researched it and come back and said.
And the other thing that I'll share is we would not need to hire an architect to, what essentially happens is Tremco serves as the, as the designer. And then there are a number of roofers that install Tremco products that would then bid on it. So they would serve as our, as our general contractor.
Contrast Tremco.
Is there a manufacturer of a, of a product that?
We did look at another.
Garland?
Garland.
And Garland's initial cost would be higher, their life cycle cost, so argue is lower. I think that's a little bit debatable. But that's, that's, Garland's tends to be from talking to others or get more proprietary than other Tremco. So I think you'll have more bidders on Tremco installed than you have.
Tremco represented it with fear. He needs some water. Did some things. I mean, he impressed me. I agree.
Aye.